We'll call the city, Scottsboro, a work session. We're there for the order of the M.K.A. Governor, Mr. Kenner, and the pledge of allegiance given by Mr. Greg Mashburn.
Well, I, God, would give you thanks and praise for these great things towards us. We ask for you to be with the government of the United States, the government of Alabama, Jackson County, and the city as they go about the public business, the protection of people. Lead, guide, and direct all of our leaders in my way with these things we ask in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic
Number one on tonight's agenda, the court session is to discuss the State of Newer Jackson County Tourism Grant Application. Stephanie, she here? Are you? Want to kind of go over what you turned in?
Sure. Do you mind if I just read this?
Yes, ma'am.
State of Newer, Jackson County, Alabama is proud to host our inaugural Fix and Pets Chariot Car Show at Goose Pond Call and Resort on May 4th with the rain date of May 11th. All proceeds from this event will be used to provide low-cost stay and new surgeries for pets in Jackson County to prevent pet overpopulation and euthanasia. We're an all-volunteer organization, and we operate solely via the generous donations of concerned citizens and through proceeds raised during our various fundraising events. This show will be open to all customs, plastic, street rods, muscle cars, and trucks. There is no admission fee or parking fee for spectators. There will be something for everyone, including goodie bags for participants, trophies, raffles, food, vendors, entertainment, games, and activities for kids and adults, and a ladies' oasis. We currently have security food vendors, snack vendors, and several vans. We expect this family-friendly event to attract people from all over Alabama, Tennessee, and Georgia, who will likely stay overnight in area hotels and visit local attractions and restaurants. The tourism grant will be used to pay for advertising the event online, in print, and on the radio. The funds will also be used to pay for event, entertainment, and insurance. In exchange for these funds, the City of Scottsboro will receive several benefits outlined in our event sponsorship packet, such as, but not limited to, being named co-presenting sponsor of the entire event, a logo prominently featured on event promotional flyers, banners, and signs, and an extra-large logo featured prominently on the back of the event t-shirt, and also a logo on the grand event trophy. Are there any questions?
Anyone have any questions, or Stephanie? Questions? We'll put it on the council meeting for March 18th. Next, I was to discuss the budget amendment for the fire department.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I think I have emailed each of you independent of this information, but just as an overview, we should also add a comment. Our EMT, our advanced EMT, and our paramedics of the fire department get an incentive pay $1,200 to $1,400 annually for respect. What we've discovered is, what we realize is that should be considered in there. Retirement system contribution is an earnable contribution, earnable compensation, excuse me, and that's going to result in not only them paying a higher percentage rate, but also the city's contribution. And that would require, for the rest of this year, an $1,119 budget amendment to make up that city's portion of that. So, that's the budget amendment that we're asking for. And any questions about that, I'll be happy to explain.
This, I believe, will get us in complete compliance with the retirement system, out of the rules. Maybe, is that true?
Of course.
And a fair lighter standard. Sometimes, when the rules appear to conflict, then this will do that, the box with both sets of rules evolves.
Any questions? We'll have on the end of court session, I mean, council meeting, instead of... The next one, I believe, is you as well. Go to item number three, discuss the resolution supporting House Bill 344.
So, I, again, had asked in, in the vicinity, a sample resolution to support what was House Bill 344 in 2018. This is a bill that representatives led by the county has filed, and in essence, it would apply, it would apply to new hires from, you give municipalities the opportunity to put new hires into an RSA Tier 1 system, Tier 1 mirroring system. The employee pays an op, the details are all worked out in the bill, I don't want to get too far into that, but what we're realizing in public safety, and not to speak for Ralph, but the Tier 2 system requires public safety to work till age 56, and 36 years, hiring somebody at 20 is a long time to do our kind of work. So, we're realizing that it's causing some problems with recruitment, some problems with retention of employees across the state, and that this bill is able to correct that. It's not, the bill will not require or mandate anything that gives each local unit under RSA the option to enter into this new level system. Sum it up. So, there will be a new bill number, it's been pretty filed, but a bill number hasn't been issued yet, so it should be tomorrow or the next day.
Good summary.
Thank you. Sort of.
May I ask you, if the bill does pass, then it would be up to the municipality to opt in, and then if we chose as a city to opt in for those under Tier 2 to go to Tier 1, then we would do the calculations and see.
The actuaries done via RSA, but essentially, an existing Tier 2 employee, you know, got two or three working in the fire department, they would, they would be responsible for a buyback to make up the difference in comp in, in contribution rate. And then from that point forward, it would be a different contribution.
Clarify, I ask.
Period, as the bill's written, obviously actuaries change from time to time, but as the bill's written, there's no immediate cost that's recognized by the city. Actuaries will change over the course of years.
Yeah. Anything else, Gene? Any questions?
This is something that we've done. Where, where these employees, not just in, in safety issues, but if you go to work at 20 years old, like Gene says, it's a long time, and that's, that's a benefit for recruitment.
No, it's not, just as a point of information, I guess, not public safety, not police and fire, actually have to work till age 62, I believe, so that's potentially a 42-year career, and that's not undoable, but if you're working in the street department 42 years, it's a long time, and it's something that works. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. There is an item number four, it's a lease agreement with the Industrial Development Board.
You have for you a sample lease that we tend to use in leasing property to IDV and other entities. The city owns property on Goose Pond Island, where the credit union used to live. The city does take full title back to that property, and the Industrial Development Board, which is to partner with Northeast College, establish a truck driving training property there on the island. Tyler is very excited, and he's really excited about this. To get from point A to point B, the city would need to begin by leasing to the Industrial Development Board, Industrial Up, and then turn up the lease to the college. This is requested by the board of the city. The term would be five years, a dollar a year, and the property remaining on the city.
Any questions? We'll put that on the March 18th committee. Yours will be final here as well. Thank you. Dr. Reyes?
Good.
Delugian?
Fifteen minutes, 25 minutes? All right. Well, it's come to my attention that traffic has been a topic for y'all as a place, so anytime you talk about traffic, the schools are obviously are involved in that, and you have 2,450 students and over 300 workers, you're talking about 27, 2800 people out of a town of 14,500 that are on the road in the morning and the afternoon because of what we do. And so, as y'all look at, as mayor and council, as y'all look at, you know, things to do with traffic, I kind of wanted to give y'all an idea of why we do what we do. We run 23 buses, two of those buses were special needs, so we also have 21 regular routes that we run. The morning time is not a super big issue because you have between 7:00 and, the high school actually doesn't start until 8:15, so their kids being dropped off on buses and cars between 7:00 and 18:00, they don't have to be there at any certain time. The afternoon seems to be, always in every system, is a little more problematic because you get out at a certain time, so the cars don't drop off like they do sequentially or at different times. Most people are there pretty close to the time when school goes out. Our buses are really kind of what I wanted, just kind of give you an idea, so again, as you think about traffic and possibly giving us some ideas, and let me say this, Chief Dogg and his folks have been great for us. We really, the Cecil and Broad Street there has worked out real well, we've got a little device, if you want to come stand out there with me, I'd love to show you how it works, it's kind of fun, but anyway. What we do is, is in the afternoons, four buses go to Nelson. They pick up kindergarteners and go to Colwell, but there are 13 buses in the loop waiting. That is our exchange point. The kindergarteners should need to get onto one of the other 13 buses that are already there, and get off of those buses and get onto the buses at Colwell, the ones that need to stay, stay on those four buses that come from Nelson. Then Colwell students come out and get on one of those now 17 buses that takes them to their neighborhood. Once they leave, they then go and make a left on the Broad, they make that first right after you pass King Colwell Park, I'm not sure the name of that road, but it's the first right there, and they go back by the junior high, and they come into Collins from the back. And so, what happens is, once those 17 buses load, then they leave Collins, and out of those 17 buses, when they leave Collins, two of the buses will turn to the left and go by the VFW. 15 buses will take a right and go towards Broad. Out of those 15 buses that go to Broad, eight of them turn to the right. Four of those buses continue on down towards Captain D's. Four of those buses take the right on Broad, and then the left onto whatever that road is in front of Piglet Wiggly, and they go out to the road heading towards County Park and 72. And then we have seven buses that take a left from Broad, left onto Broad, heading down towards the police department. So, again, once they get onto Cecil, two have already turned left going towards VFW when they get outside of Collins, the other 15 are heading out to Broad. Eight turn to the right, four going down towards Captain D's, and four going up by Piglet Wiggly, the other seven will turn and go towards the police station that way. Our biggest issue is in the afternoon, we have 12 buses that run secondary routes that start at the junior high, two of them will go to the high school, the junior high gets out before the high school does. The issue that we have, and I know that we cause some problems there at San Newton County Park, I know we cause a little bit of an issue in the afternoon because we have 12 buses that are leaving the junior high, and they're going to the high school, and you all know what route they have to take. So, we certainly apologize for that, that's the way it's always been, so that's not a new issue for us. So, they go that way, and then they will, will go by Taco Bell. The only reason that we don't send them down under the overpass, and I called him, Tony Ball, if he was still here, he would be telling you exactly these things, because I called him today, and we talked several times in the past about why we do what we do. But we, we can't go to the, under the overpass and turn left because there's not a light there, kind of what I'm talking about when we're going towards Captain D's. We can't take that left because we've got merging traffic coming on, off of, coming from Captain D's towards town, and then we'd also have to merge with the traffic that's coming on the overpass to get to the light to keep going straight down 72. So, that's why our 12 buses have to go that way. So, again, I know my time, I've got about 15 seconds, I just know that the traffic, I know those are conversations that y'all are having, and unfortunately, the school system has to be in any conversation that y'all have about traffic. We certainly, you know, whatever decisions y'all make in the future as a mayor and a council, I just wanted to kind of give you that quick information so that you'll have as much information as you can have to make a decision. So, I know that's just a small piece, but we did have a lot of people on the road, and so if you need me to every time and talk to you more in depth about why we do what we do, that's just kind of the routes, and I say the buses because that's the most difficult ones to get around town, they're not quite as mobile, obviously, as the cars are. So, that's kind of, that's kind of where we are, and hopefully that'll, that'll help you guys, so.
Wes?
Yes.
You've got some extra pedestrian traffic as well because of the consolidations?
Well, we do have extra at Colwell, and then also at Collins. Colwell is, we've got a system that, that works really well at Colwell. Again, the first day or two that we did this, I almost had a stroke, I couldn't sleep at night because it was so congested, but again, Mr. Dogg, Chief Dogg, we have a device that helps us on Cecil and Broad, and we can actually control traffic, we can leave the lights on as long as we want them to, going in a certain direction. I think there's four different ways that that, those lights change, and we can hold it, and hold it as long as we want to, or we can make it go as short as we want to. So, some days are a little bit difficult. Today was an easy day because it's cold, and when it's cold, mama makes them ride the bus, so it was pretty easy, but we, we do have a little bit of extra traffic there. What we're thinking about next year is looking at possibly moving back the elementary times to, to get out about 15 minutes, as if that'll help us do. I've talked with Michael, so they get out at 2:30, I asked him how long does it take for those ladies and gentlemen to get out of the parking lot and get home, and he told me it's when 2:30 hits, they're gone, so hopefully, we will miss a little bit of that traffic on Cecil and Broad, but again, I don't know, I don't know how else you get those 12 buses, other than by, by the Taco, but that, that's the biggest problem for us. So, you know, again, as y'all are making those decisions, you know, if you say, well, why does the school system send those 12 buses there, I mean, we don't have any other way to, unfortunately, that's the only way to get them over to the other side of town. They're not going to go down Broad Street and then try to get on Garden Fair and that kind of thing. You know, we used to send them a couple, we used to try to send them to the high school to make them that left at, was the church over there, plus to the Causeway, and you'd go on Crawford Road and that back way.
Richdale.
Around the side. We tried to turn left there, and we can't, we can't turn left there because there's not a light, so we had to send them all the way down 72, down Snodgrass, and we'd bring them around back, so it's just tough for us to turn left, so that's why we don't do that either. So, again, just, just some information for y'all, and I'll be turning transportation over to somebody in my, if I'm not doing it anymore. Back there.
Thank you. Let my ear up, Ray. Jim Jack?
Well, I think he's answered most of my questions. I've been living on Cecil Street, I own property on Cecil Street since 1954, and I've been watching the traffic, and I own property on the left, and the property on the right. I've tried to get the city to look at, maybe making some changes there, and my suggestion for a change is, I have two lots there that the city can buy, that connect right in with County Park Road, and County Park Road could be, and each of you's got a little sketch that I gave you, if you look at the second page. County Park Road, if, if we came across those two lots there and aimed it back in to Cecil Street, that would make it to where we could take the red light off of Cecil Street and have no left turns on Cecil Street. People could still use, I need to be able to keep Cecil Street open, but the only problem that we might have in that is the trucks coming down there. Superintendent's been down there doing those surveys for the last three weeks, I even saw him in the rain with it and making the traffic light go, so that would be my suggestion, is we could do away with the traffic light at Cecil Street, have no left turns in Cecil Street. And the only problem that I see that not mine too, was getting the trailer trucks. When I was down there last week, and watching them, last Thursday it was, there was 15 trailer trucks came in the 45-minute period that I was there, and that's mixing in with the school buses and all that. So, either that or the trucks need to be routed out to Porter Road, or whatever road it is they call that today. The property that I've got there is available to you, and maybe with, I'll see where the traffic out at County Park Road, City 2, that you've got money for it, maybe the money for that could be used to purchase the property. That's all I have. If you have any questions?
Do you want any questions for Mr. Kenner? Have you had that property priced?
I have none, and it's probably, it's about $1,200 a foot, and you've got 220 feet, almost two lots that I've dealt on that. I can show you some figures higher than that, I know that that's the last quarter I own, and I know what I provided the property for all of us, and it's about $1,500.
How many, how many feet did you say you have?
220 feet on Broad Street.
Any other questions?
The other thing I'd like to ask the mayor, you came down, you were on the lot, and did the driveway down there, and it's been about six months ago, and the last thing I heard that we were going to do was, was it, it's certain as they got finished with the square that you were gonna...
We have not been able to get a...
Yes, sir. Sorry to interrupt. We were trying to get a contractor to put a curb in that we had discussed, and we can't get a contractor to give us a price for that small job. So, it's something that we're going to look at again this spring.
If you do, you need to take into consideration, you're going to do 40 feet down, down there and put it in the curb. You're doing away with a little 27 meters of space between the sidewalk and the gutter. If you decide to do what I've drawn on the line, you need to run that all the way to the end of that lot, that'll give you two more feet to get the trucks in, if you keep the trucks coming.
Thank you.
Mayor, can we get Josh possibly, see if that's a possibility, as far as the road, bringing that road across, I'm not sure, it's something, what kind of...
We can, we can put some numbers together for y'all to look at. I think, yeah. I know, if I may, the, when Volker did the, the, this intersection at Cecil and Broad, and County Park and Broad, and then over the hill to Taco Bell, all that was in that study, and, and they looked at Malfunction Junction there, and they basically said that their recommendation was to buy a part of Piglet Wiggly's parking lot and move County Park over and try to do away with the one line, but we just didn't think that was a doable solution at the time, based on the... But we'll get Josh with that issue.
Jim Volker?
Well, I want to thank the council, Mayor, for giving me an opportunity to come and speak, and it seems like everything's about traffic. But I did, I will address the, the County Park and San Newton intersection. You know, I'm in business there. I've been here 44 years, I've been out there on the highways for 15 years. You know, we have increased a whole lot in population in the last 20 years in Scottsboro, but our traffic, I believe everybody's got three cars now. Anyway, there's so much traffic out there, but, you know, I, I know it's a hard decision to make and what you're just doing, but out there, it is such, it's a safety thing, and I'm, you know, we talk about the developments, and I'm, I'm all for development, I mean, anything that gives the city, gives me, so I'm, I'm for it, but the safety part of that is out there, we need to do something because we've been lucky over the last several years not to have any fatalities there, but we've had a lot of injuries there, and I doubt there's a week goes by that we don't have at least probably two wrecks, or maybe more out there. Anytime it rains, we're going to have it, and that's been a lot lately, so, but, you know, I, I agree a little bit in the paper about just meeting on it, and I understand that the state is interested in hip finish, and the city will put up so much, and they will. But, you know, I don't understand all of their reasoning, but I do know that we wouldn't probably want them to come in here and do something out there without us having the input in it, like they have in some cities. Now, they've come in the song where they put up stuff, and, you know, they don't give the city a lot of input in it. They've done it in hospital, they've actually done it in Ranger, you know, and where we all have input on it, our engineers do, our amount, it seems like a small amount compared to what it'll cost to do that, where we will, and your people doing that, you know, they may see it as a hazard enough to come in here and build their own, do it their own way, put up their little concrete barriers and all, but it's something we really, you know, I wish y'all would really consider because I know we're talking about another red light. Well, I'm not crazy about red lights either, but you, and I understand it was probably be up there close to the... But you, and I understand it was probably be up there close to the Chinese restaurant probably. Because that is a, I'm sure, where that is a city street designated thing there. It's just never been used as that. But, you know, a red light kind of controls your traffic. Alan 35, if we didn't have that one out there right now, we'd be going into Home Depot and all. To slow that traffic down, we have about as many wrecks up there on that bypass crossover as we do at County Park. But that red light does bust that traffic up in county gates that through there at a slower pace. And they're running 60, 65 mile there and they slow down if that red light changes or they see it. If they did, they would be running that fast when they bump right there to that bypass. And that'd be a serious situation. Because you can't, people are going to pull out in front of you. I don't care, you know, red light's something in there. But it would just kind of gate. And I just think that that might be a good idea. Like I said, I don't fear for red lights especially myself. I watched them put the one hand down a gully, you know, and I thought, you know, how crazy is this? But actually, it turned out to be a pretty good idea because of the way they've done that to get those people out of the Hampton Coe area and being bull in there. That was a, that was a pretty positive thing. But I thank y'all for giving me the opportunity to speak. And I said, I'm not here to, to lambaste the council. I sit right there and I know what you're doing. And I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.